Filled by petitioners. The Partnership owner of permanent parcel number 08A0210000800. Quail Developers Inc., owner of permanent parcel number 08A00200000430. Concord Township owner trustees, owner of permanent parcels. And the City of Painesville owner of permanent parcel number 08A0200000370. And including property owned by Concord Real Estate Investment LLC to also be included in the jet. Permanent parcel numbers 08A020A0000A, 08A020A000100, 08A020A000150, and 08A019A000010 located in Concord Township, demanding the jet contract and declaring emergency.
The Concord Painesville jet was created in 2008 as a partnership between Concord Township and the City of Painesville. The specific goal of the jet is further economic development along with the Auburn Road, or Auburn Cryo Road business corridor, which is an area at south of the intersection of Interstate 90 and State Route 44. The economic, an economic opportunity was presented as a result of economic deficits by both communities when Lake Health closed the hospital in Painesville and built TriPoint Medical Center in Concord. The city lost tax revenues and Concord Township found itself with insufficient infrastructure to support the traffic demands that the hospital and additional development created. Currently, the jet is made up of six members or property owners, which are highlighted in red. So those owners are identified currently in red. City of Painesville currently has one parcel located within the jet off of Auburn Road, which is the Auburn Road Water Tower, with an outstanding position, or petition before the city council tonight. It includes the Cryo Road Water Tank, and I'll give you an idea. There's the Parkway. The City of Painesville's parcel for the Cryo Road Water Tower is right here. There are also three other property owners that have petitioned to include four properties within the jet, which two of those properties are owned by Concord Township right here. One is Quail Developers Inc., and the other one is, I lost it, I had it. I think we have to go down a little further. There we go. The Partnership, which is the fourth parcel to be included in the jet. As I said, those are the four parcels that were petitioned in. The jet board is also requesting that these four parcels, right here, owned by Concord Real Estate Investment, be included within the jet. And the legislation is pending before you tonight. It is our recommendation that the, the resolution be included, be approved to include the four parcels and also that were petitioned in, as well as the four parcels owned by Concord Real Estate Investment. There will be a public hearing, as Paul mentioned, so you will get to hear the, those in support and those against the petition, and then the legislation, then the legislation will be voted upon. I'm going to talk about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Now, the public, I'd like to have the people that are opposed, please speak first. Okay, name and address. It's open for three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Monroe. My office address is 1001 Lakeside Avenue, Suite 1400, Cleveland, Ohio, 44114. With the Law Office of Manzor Gavin LPA. This evening, I am here to oppose resolution number one on behalf of our client, Concord Real Estate Investments LLC. As you heard, this property owner did not request to be part of the jet. And specifically opposes the inclusion of its property in the jet. We will appear on Wednesday night in Concord Township as well. We have requested and had a meeting with the jet board chair, with the jet administrator, and the law director for Concord Township, and expressed our opposition to this. At this point, this being termed a petition, but if the property owner is not petitioning it, I would suggest it's not a petition at all. We also, as a plenary manner, we are not sure that all of the service requirements under the hyper revised code have been met. And if they have not, we will certainly pursue that as necessary. This is the third reading, apparently. This is the first meeting notice we've received of any hearings on this, lack of a better term, petition. So certainly that is concerning to the property owner. Also, as the prior speaker indicated, the jet may have been created to provide infrastructure. Our client has already invested thousands of dollars in infrastructure. So on the drawing that you see, their Capital Parkway is an approved 12-inch concrete road far exceeding any specifications for any political subdivision in the state of Ohio. In addition, there's water and sanitary sewer. And in fact, our client not only paid for its connection to the sanitary sewer system to the north, but pre-purchased capacity and is able to offer that to purchasers of the lots in its industrial, its light industrial park, which is known as Concord Real Estate, the yellow parcels, and a few of the other parcels that are indicated. If subsequent users would like to do, join the jet, they certainly could petition to Painesville City Council in Concord as a jet to be included at a later date. In fact, two of the, well, I guess, three of the purchasers of land in the jet requested to be included in the jet after the fact. But you'll hear from Mr. Phil West, who has over 40 years of experience in selling commercial real estate, that the jet designation is actually a detriment to selling the property. The reality is, for the land that's shown in yellow on the left, there is no income tax. The addition to the jet would make this property, would have to have income tax paid by any buyer of that property. We feel that's a detriment to the parcels being sold. And as evidence, we would suggest that this has been fairly clearly excluded. Two of the properties that have been previously sold, previously been sold for light industrial uses, that being Denor Attack, which is the first building at the corner there of Discovery Lane, and Synetic, which is the property further to the north. Again, those are not included, didn't request to be included. Quite frankly, there is just no benefit at this time to the vacant land being included in the jet. We would ask that if you want to pursue this jet petition, then pursue it on behalf of the people who are actually petitioning to have their property included in the jet. Leave our client's four parcels out of the ordinance that the resolutions are at this time, and if at a later date, future buyers or users of that property would like to be included in the jet, that they have the opportunity to do that. So at this time, I'd like to call Mr. West to testify, and I believe I've submitted to each of you a memo that he has prepared regarding the marketability of the property, if in fact you choose to add this property to the jet, which we have been authorized by our client to pursue any of all steps to propose in the future. So again, like I mentioned, will be on Wednesday night before the Concord Township trustees to voice their opposition, and we will proceed at that time. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. West to testify.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Phil West. I just indicated an old guy, I've been this sort of 40 years.
And your address. Excuse me. And address was?
My address is 1352 Clinton Avenue, downtown Cleveland, 44114. Name of the firm is Hannah Commercial. Sold my firm, or of course, to Hannah a couple of years ago, four years ago. We, myself individually and firm, have sold land throughout great Cleveland, done a lot of the industrial parks, Beta, Alpha, figured out a lot of the solar area, Queensburg, and so forth. So I think that we are capable of speaking on behalf of this owner with regards to the consequences of the jet going into the site. Concord candidly is the next step. Manner is pretty well filled up at this point in time. We have attempted to get other people. We sold the four parcels that John mentioned. Here in the park, etc., we believe that there is activity, and activity coming this way. When you sell a piece of property like this, you sell basically the attributes of the property. In this particular case, I know when it started out, we did the hospital, located the hospital, etc. The medical thing that was there, they didn't want in the jet. The reason they didn't want it in the jet was because the doctors didn't want to pay the income taxes, etc. I don't know if that's still true today or not, but the point is that it affects our ability to sell these parcels of ground. On the other side of that, if they really wanted to be part of the jet, we're not stopping them to do that, and they can do that on their own in the future. As John also pointed out, the Capital Parkway and Discovery Parkway were put in by the owner. They are far exceeding the standards, but anything that's necessary. And my experience with regards to jets is that most of the money that is used to raise my jets is used to put in the infrastructure of the streets. It's not the case here. This owner did this on his own, without any help from anybody, no tax payment, no nothing. They built a couple of buildings, and some manufacturing companies there, which subsequently we sold a couple of years ago. But as you can see, as John also mentioned, neither one of the two buildings we sold there have gone into the jet. And the reason for that, partially, not fully, is that basically they don't want to pay income taxes on the employees there. It's one of the reasons they were there. They are paying taxes, they're paying real estate taxes, other items and costs that they have. If they felt that it was advantageous, they would basically join the jet, and they have every right to do that. But to restrict any future buyer of this particular property to having to accept the jet, and they don't really get a benefit that the amount of money that the jet basically would give to these individuals is minuscule as compared to the cost that they would incur because of the income tax aspect of it. So there really is no reason to do this, as we've seen put in the owner. Again, the parcels that we sold basically are in the jet today. That was their decision to do that, got the lesson. But I think that we want to leave that up to the individuals. And I think that the, I think three of the four sites that were mentioned here are owned by Concord. So I mean, it's a little self-evident, in my opinion, to say, you know, we want to put this property owned by Concord Real Estate Investments into the jet. We have no incentive to do it, and we didn't ask to do it. And as John also pointed out, this is the first meeting I'm aware of. I guess there have been three here, or two other hearings prior to this one. And I don't think we got very fair shade with regards to a discussion of the particular issue at all. That's my input. If there's any questions, happy to try and answer. Thank you.
Would you, you have the public, speak as forward.
Good evening. First of all, I'm 6440 Auburn Road, Concord, Ohio, 44077. I guess you all know I'm a chairman of the board trustees in Concord and your partner in the Concord Painesville jet. I also serve as treasurer on the jet board. And obviously, I'm going to speak in favor of this petition and this process, a little bit of history and clarification. Capital Parkway, Discovery were put in by previous successor to the current owner, which was Swage Lock. This was originally their property. This was put in in the 1980s. So this was not a recent expenditure by a property owner in terms of investment in infrastructure. They have been public roads for a long time now. As such, Concord Township is a stakeholder for maintaining them. I can tell you that based on the condition of the real estate in the near future, they're going to need some extensive repair work, and that is going to be an expensive proposition. So not that that necessarily reflects directly on petition, but I want to sort of frame that in terms of infrastructure within the jet area so that you all have that clarification. When we look at the current, the map up there, you'll note that there have been three, I'm sorry, four parcels sold by the real estate group that was speaking earlier. Three of those have gone into the jet, have petitioned, gone into the jet, and then are in the jet. Vista Springs, the Lake Steel Nursing Facility, which is on that north side of Capital Parkway towards the Concord Township parcel that, the seven acres that we purchased. The only parcel that is not, that has been subdivided and sold was the Lake Health property that is directly north of Concord Township's property. Obviously, the hospital could choose to bring that in at some point and have not done so at any time. Each one of those was voluntary. Those business owners felt that it was a benefit to join and did so upon purchasing their property. And so I would argue that, as those of you on council know, that jet membership has a great deal of positives that go with it. Some of which has already taken place and more of which will take place. Some of which has taken place is, of course, the roughly $13 million project, opening up the Capital Parkway and Route 44, Prada Road. That is a critical interchange that's allowing all of that property that you see there in yellow to now accelerate in terms of this development and sale opportunity. Frankly, without that investment, without that interchange, that property would still sort of be locked away in the back with a lot, a lot of visibility. When I talk to businesses that look at it or are interested, that roadway is the biggest reason why they are interested. So there, it's already been a serious amount of investment by Concord and obviously the City of Painesville in that quarter with regards to infrastructure. And just recently, the jet board passed additional benefits that we are looking to be able to provide for jet members, businesses and properties that locate into the jet, an entire new array of incentives that we would be able to, you know, discuss and negotiate with any potential buyer of property that would be beneficial to them. In the past, we've had very limited options, and we've been trying to expand upon those to the benefit of those businesses. I do take some umbrage in the whole concept that, well, there's a, you know, there's no benefit to the jet and only detriment because of the income tax. We don't see that. There was recently a business that was looking at those properties, and I just learned of it today, and was apparently in negotiation on some of the property, chose not to purchase there and chose to locate in the Painesville. Painesville has a 2% income tax, the jet is 1.75. Clearly, it was not a detriment to that business when they were looking at locations for business. I'm sure what went into that equation was cost of real estate, price behavior, the package that your fine staff put together in terms of the benefits for that business made it advantageous to locate in Painesville versus in Concord. And so part of what we're looking to do is improve our packages together as a team so that when there is perhaps a property that someone does not want to locate at and, you know, not available, say, in Painesville's current stock, Concord has it available to both communities benefit. So I would say overall, it is a, it has been very positive for both communities. It has been seen as positive by those who have joined. There are, there are defined benefits, both in the past in terms of dollars spent and in the future benefits that will be available to future locatees. I have not yet had anybody, not one business say to me, I don't want to locate there because of potential income tax. That's never been a part of the equation. What they always want to know about is accessibility, your demographics, numbers. You all know these things. This is what goes into economic development. What's the cost of the land, those types of things. What can you do to assist them in terms of a relocation, the development? So we've put together a very robust package, and I think things are going very well. I think that Concord Painesville Partnership is, is one that obviously is already won awards for the business community, Team Neo in northeast Ohio. So the business community has embraced it. And, you know, when we talk about benefit and detriment, I would point out lastly that the property owner, there is no detriment in that there is not, when you have vacant land going into the jet, there is not one penny that would be affected to that property owner in terms of their cost or taxes or otherwise, not one cent. And so I think it's pretty hard sell to say that there's a detriment to the property owner where there's scrub, brush, grass or trees on a future property that might be sold and have a business relocated there. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to checking the program.
Anyone else want to speak for this positive?
We have.
Anything else?
We have right to respond?
No. You can close the call. At this moment, I'd like to close our public hearing.
We'd like to state our objection. It's a public hearing.
Yeah, I would think that they have a right to respond. A lot of times, if people want to speak for it and then people against it, so it happened. The other order was used, but they had, we had gone in reverse order, they would have changed the order. So I think it's fair in terms of providing as much information to your community and council to give them a chance to respond. But to limit it to what was brought up during the, that particular presentation.
The kind of misbehavior, the property is now owned by the same person. They got everything, Mr. Lennon, Mr. Lennon owns Swage Lock. His daughter owns this property. She owns Swage Lock. I don't know what the difference is, but to me, it's the same family. I got a little upset when I heard this. Over the past number of years that we've tried to market the property, they, Concord, have said they want to cooperate with us with regards to marketing the property. They had proposed a town center in the property, which would take at least 100 acres to the whole piece of property. They got one person that responded that was interested in joining that, etc. We've had a number of people look at the property. They've told us they're going to tell us, anybody that comes to them, and we always go to them with whoever we have get, because we have the purpose, so forth. I'm in contact with two people who have been out there that I found, have some, and have two guys who were told that they couldn't go on the site. They couldn't go on the site because of heavy industrial. They're in matter, they're in a light industrial district. They're basically machine tool companies, etc. Candidly, I'm a little frustrated because every time we turn around, there's another problem. The ownership also gave money to do the study, basically, to what Capital Parkway through to 44. Although access is important in industrial parks, etc., it is not the sole criteria. And I think the fact that the hospital who bought that corner piece, wanted Auburn money capital, and didn't go into the jet, is a further indication of basically, they want to see what kind of use they're going to get and be able to tell people that they don't have to pay taxes. If they want to do that, income taxes. They have to pay the real estate taxes, they have to pay everything else that any other client would have to pay if they owned a property in that location. So again, it's an indication that basically, put the jet in, it's fine for people that want that, but we don't want to have that restriction in trying to sell 178 acres, which is the balance of the land that we have. I think it's also important that they are getting currently income from the one, two, what, three, four, five pieces that we've sold there, six pieces that we've sold there, when they say there's no money basically to fix the streets, etc. Again, those streets, as John pointed out, are at least two or three inches thicker, the concrete in the roads, etc. Swage Lock, they do something, they do it right. And this is an excellent industrial park. It will generate a lot of money without a lot of cost, basically, to the community for schools and other things, or the income of the properties themselves and other aspects, community involvement, etc., from any tenant that goes in there. So we encourage you to turn that, that part down. If they want to be in the jet, let them be in the jet. He talks about no cost to the owner. There is a cost to the owner. The cost to the owner is that if you never know what you're selling, you can't very well sell with the other. So if we've got to tell people what they're talking about the jet, they're talking about putting on an income tax versus no input tax, it's going to affect the owner. It's going to affect the saleability of the property, etc. So again, if they, that tenant wants to go in and they want to be part of the jet, God bless them, and that's what's happened with a couple of the properties we sold. On the other hand, we'd like to leave it the way it is, the parcels are owned by Concord Real Estate Investment, and have the individual owners decide whether they want to do it or not. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? All right. I'd like to, motion close the public hearing.
Make a motion close the public hearing.
Second.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Will you adopt?
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Subsek.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Denalow?
No.
Mrs. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
You're running into closing comments. I have a question, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Just to say, I hope everybody gets out and votes tomorrow. They'll see it before tomorrow, but we do have a good term tomorrow, and I hope everybody gets out and vote tomorrow. That's all.
Mrs. Jenkins?
I would like to second that. No matter what, who stands for, just make sure you stand for something tomorrow. I know the big kind of ballot elections is already recorded, seeing presidential election here tomorrow is in early voting, so that goes well, I think. And I know also that the demographic is really already making showing, so it's awesome.
Thank you, Mrs. Denalow.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank our electric crews for October 20th, particularly during the storm. Also, the cities that responded to support us, Wadsworth, Orville, Hudson, Etahuppa Falls, and also just Ego residents. I know that there was a lot of individual work that had to go on, probably some homes, a lot of trees down, and I know that it's difficult to, you know, be for long periods of time, so. A lot of work, yeah, I heard of that.
Mr. Foder?
A couple of things. This past Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Paul and I attended the OML conference, and it was very informative, and over the next period here, bring back some of the information. There was, they have booths there, and this was precision concrete cutting. Obviously, there are other cities that are having problems with their sidewalks and even their streets, where they have programs in place. One of the things that they did is if a resident wanted to, you know, keep their trees, they would pay for the replacement of the sidewalk themselves, and they could keep the tree. Secondly, it's precision cutting for sidewalks instead of replacing for $250, it was somewhere around $75 a cut per square. And they had topics like small cell, wireless service, and placement of facilities in the public way. Obviously, we're having conversations now about, you know, small cell wireless, and it described it like a flashlight. The closer you hold a flashlight to the ground, the more intense the light is, so the higher you move it up, the less it is. And if you put it up real high, then you have to have a whole bunch more energy. And so it was an interesting conversation there. There was also a segment on the recent development in the Ohio New Medical Marijuana Law, and they talked a little bit about what you do with the medical marijuana and employees. And there was just a variety of different topics. And so over the next couple of weeks, I'll be sharing the information with individuals. That's about it. Thank you.
Hello. Mrs. Chu?
Yes, I want to remind everybody, there's, although our court did mention as well, there is a town hall meeting, November 15th, in the library at Home Street School, starting at 7:00. As those of you that have attended my town hall know, I bring cookies, and I bring coffee and I bring water, so I'd like everybody to come on out and join us as I echo the voting thing. I already voted, and I was number 31,610, my husband was 11. So that's a lot for a young, and please get out and vote, and thank you.
I'd like to congratulate our firefighter, Anthony Skinner, as well as Paintsville Police Department for being awarded the $56,000 in traffic enforcement grants. That's great. I also want to thank our electric department and the other cities that helped us out on our storm that we had on October 20th, and all the residents who came out to Fall Fest with us and break the storm. We got stormed on, and as we drove home, we, you know, short ride home saw all the damage that that short, full wind did. It was amazing how quickly, I mean, everything went out, but also how quickly it was all pulled back together. And I also just want to say that there's a story time at the courthouse this coming Wednesday. I will not be able to attend this one, but the last one was heavily attended, and the kids had a great time.
Thank you.
You know, I had a good time with the OML convention that I live with Jim, and like Jim said, there's a couple of areas we'll talk about, and later on, and also a couple of these, I've got a chance for the Hurry State Coburn Electric Plant, which is in southern Illinois. And as soon as I get an okay, I've got a little slideshow ready out, showing some of the things that I saw. And so it's a really unique, it's the cleanest power plant, coburn power plant in the United States, possibly in the world. And they also produce their own, they have their own coburn brand on site, so they can process the coburn right there instead of trucking anything in. Very self-sufficient. At this point, can I get a motion to move back to executive session?
I'll make a motion to move back to executive session, being held in accordance with ORC 2121, got 288, got 228, to consider not available information related to the marketing plan, specific business, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance for, to negotiate with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance in accordance with section 3735.67 of the revised code, and in accordance with Article II, Section 63, to discuss pending potential litigation involved in the city, and in accordance with Article II, Section 61, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, or motion, demotion compensation of an employee or official of the city.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Denalow?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?